...of the whole to order, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Hopkey here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
We have the minutes of the October fourteenth committee of the whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Not a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee March.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkey.
Yes.
And Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Public comment. We'll go on to item five, website redesign upgrade.
Basically, I just wanted to bring these forward to you. There's some numbers in your packets. On estimates of what we got, the current company that does our, has our website, we'd like to upgrade a little bit, to add the calendar, make it a little better function, the news items, make them a little better functional, and we can go from there. There's some of the things that the trustees had mentioned that they'd like to see on the website, and we can also add that at this time, so, thanks. So, that's where we're at. I don't know, still Webfoot Design, who currently does our website, having some changes to it. And just trying to get back to my numbers. There's a hosting agreement that we're going to have them host the site on their servers. It'll make it faster, more reliable. Anyway, new custom design for the village, template development integration, responsive development, more mobile friendly. In other words, you can pull it up from your cell phone. Constant contact sign up for newsletter subscription, and we have constant contact already. Let's add that to the page. And website calendar to display the village's Google Calendar, which that will set up for us. And the cost of that updating will be thirty-five hundred dollars. And I think the last time we updated that was, I think you guys did it like three or four years ago. So, the actual update, site design, so I'm not sure, so.
Now, is the monthly fees, does that, you said something here, is there, if you need to change like tax or, you know,
We'll have the ability internally to change tax, so we don't have to go to them all the time. And that'll be a little better because we can change on the fly then. Like today, I would have liked, when we were busy, but I'd like a couple of us today to be trained on it because today I was looking at the leaves that are starting to gather along the parkways. Want to make sure they're not in the street. Today would have been a great day to throw that out there. Please make sure, you know, that kind of a newsletter-y thing that we can change on the fly, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Do you do that, Greg? Make those changes?
I can make them, or we can train Stacy to make them, or Donna can make them. I mean, we'll, there will be a master, then editors, and in fact, Mary will be an editor. And then we can kind of change it on the fly, so, which make it nice.
So now, if we get our newsletter act together, is that something that can be integrated? So you can see the past newsletters?
It'll have its page, yeah, and then it'll be archival.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll make sure of that. I've worked with these guys, I was actually glad you had them because I work with them in Bourbon A. And they're, they do a really, really good job. They really do. They have quite a few towns and organizations that are not-for-profit like we are that they do this type of thing for, and they do a really good job. Your site was what you paid for, you know, I mean, you got, you got, you got a decent site. It just needs to spruce it up, so.
What was the last, what was the cost of the last update?
I haven't, I'm not sure.
When was the last update?
Yeah, I had the last update.
What was the cost of it, last and when was it?
It was a while ago, I don't.
I mean, we've done many.
I get that.
Little things, but I'd have to go.
We're, I mean, so, we're going to be paying thirty-five hundred dollars extra to what we're already paying them?
You're going to, you're going to bump it up, you're going to, you're going to spruce up the site, and that's what the thirty-five hundred is for.
In addition to our mobile app?
The mobile app is, yeah, it's a completely separate.
So we're talking.
Because Webfoot, Webfoot is not the mobile app.
Right, no, I understand, and I.
Although we'll integrate the mobile app.
And again, I was one of the trustees that voted no for the, and I'm still for that mobile app. And now, from the previous administration, now we're going to come across an additional thirty-five hundred dollars for Webfoot. What is that going to do for the residents? What is that going to do for the general public?
Communication.
How's that going to help us? We already have a Village of Piattone Facebook site. We already have mobile apps. We already, I mean, we already have postings, we already have W P A L. I mean, when's that, when's it going to stop? I mean, we're already close to eight thousand dollars a year for this.
Personally, personally, I think all of those things are extremely important because not everybody is going to look at the Facebook page. Not everybody is going to look at the mobile app, and not everybody's going to look at the website. But I think those are the three big components of being able to communicate with the community. If we can do a newsletter-type thing on the website, I think that's huge. You know, once we get people used to looking at that instead of trying to do, because we've talked about a paper newsletter, and just talking with the guys from Webfoot, they're like, that's pretty, you know, it's almost like a dinosaur.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not against social.
And it's also very expensive.
I'm not against social media, I mean, Mr. Cross.
But I, but I think.
But it's just, it's just like, you know.
I think it's a small price to pay to communicate because, I mean, not everybody reads the newspaper.
I mean, is this thirty-five hundred dollars absolutely necessary?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, you.
I mean, to get our website to where it needs to be today, it's absolutely necessary, yes.
And what is, and so we have this mobile app for the people also?
And that's for people who work off their phones, you know, like the app, the application. That's been done, that was done before, you know, I came in.
Yes.
But I still think, I think it's a good idea, once we get people used to using.
Acclimated to all this, I understand.
I mean, to me, communication is huge.
I just, thirty-five hundred dollars just seems like.
To me, thirty-five hundred dollars seems cheap to get our website to where it needs to be. You can, you can do a very cheap website. I have, I personally, for my business, my website is just kind of bare bones because I don't have a lot of information to dispense. We as a village, the more we can get onto our website to get out to the public, the better, you know.
And have we checked around any other places, or are we just sticking with Webfoot? Have we priced compared?
The only reason why we stuck with Webfoot, and because it was under five grand, number one, and number two, the only reason we stuck with Webfoot is they designed the original page. They can update it a lot faster and cheaper. And if you bring another entity in, I am afraid that we're going to get quotes fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars.
You're going to get into a rebuild.
Just want to get all the information.
Yeah, because they have some proprietary things on there that they own. So, you know, if you remove that, then you got to go to a different hosting site and everything, and that's where the money really comes in.
And I think just in our conversation with the Webfoot people, this is not, you know, the Cadillac Lexus, whatever you want to call it. This isn't the top-of-the-line model. This is getting us to where we actually need to be.
Well, functionality.
Yeah, absolutely.
What does, and I know very little about this, as you know, what does a top-of-the-line model have that what we're proposing here does not have?
They have video, they got scrolling news, they have pages upon pages upon pages. All these bells and whistles as far as payments and they can, they can apply for, they can apply for jobs online, they can apply for building permits online, they can apply for, pay their water bills online or apply for a water bill. I mean, they're, it's, it just, I mean, if you look, all you got to do is go on Oakbrook's site and just look at what they, and, you know, what they have on there. And, and the top-of-the-line ones run forty to fifty thousand dollars to set up. And then you've got, you know, four, five hundred dollars a month of maintenance, so. Most small villages are more in this line because it's cheaper to get into, and it makes sense. It's just something that, you know, we can get out to the residents. Now, the, the app on the phone, it's kind of a newbie thing, you know, I mean, it, it, but the nice thing is that they can push a button and go to our website. And we just, the more we direct them to Village Piattone, Village Piattone, Village Piattone, the better off we are. As we market things and as we market the village more, we can point to the website and it's more holistic. And then the website can point to the app. When you get into town, pull up the app, you know, download the app, that kind of thing, so.
So whether people in surrounding communities, or anybody who's thinking about moving here or a business here can easily access the stuff we need them to see.
So it'll be a.
So from a marketing tool.
Kind of a duplication of effort a little bit on some of that app on the phone thing because you'll have businesses listed there too, and we can list them on the, on the website, but that, I don't see that as a problem, you know. The more we get the names out there, the better off your business is, you know.
We went into this fiscal year knowing that we were going to be doing the upgrades because as technology moved forward, the website that we had didn't keep up with it.
And it has to, it has to be a long time since anything was done.
But I'm not questioning technology. I'm not questioning, even bad, I'm questioning the dollar amount, seeing that we're in such a tight budget as it is.
Right.
That's what I'm questioning.
Right, no, and I understand.
How much should we budget?
Thirty-five.
So we're right on the button.
I think it's, you know, having gone through this personally a few times, thirty-five hundred dollars is, you know, it's not cheap, but if that's the goal, right.
It's reasonable.
I mean, I'm not, yeah.
And this also is going to upgrade our email, correct?
Yes, we're also working on upgrading our email, getting out of the Outlook thing. And we've got, I mean, quite frankly, we have some computer things we need to do going forward because we're just really behind the eight ball, I mean, and I won't go into that here.
I just don't want to.
I'm not happy to discuss that with anybody.
I just didn't want to, you know, just to yes-votes without explanation.
No, absolutely, no.
Absolutely, I don't mind.
But you asked if we thought it was necessary or working, absolutely.
And I just, just want to make the conversation so that the residents know and.
Sure. Well, we've got to make that leap too because as, as we go forward with the strategic plan and things like that, start trying to attract businesses, they're going to go to your website. That's your front door. They're not going to drive down here and look, they're going to go to your website. So the more attractive we can make that look, the better off we are, so.
Once we pull the string, how long does it take for them to implement it?
I think we can get that done before the end of the month. Next, next month. Before Thanksgiving, for sure.
Now, we need to look professional to outsiders.
Absolutely.
We need that image.
Yeah.
So what are we paying for the app? Is that a monthly fee?
No, it's a yearly fee, and I want to say, I want to say for two years, I don't remember the number now because I'd looked back at it. It was, it was like twenty-four, twenty-six. I'd have to dig back into the bills and look. But that was done earlier this year.
And does that include, like, can you go in there and change it?
We're going to do, we're going to do news, we're going to do news by, go ahead, do you remember? I don't remember the exact term. We're going to have, we're going to have a Google Calendar.
We're going to have a Google Calendar that we can update, and then that'll be in there. And then I'll be able to do, well, everybody in here during the day, including chief, will be able to throw things on the website, which is, the department heads absolutely because if you get a main break in the middle of the night, if we can teach one of the guys back there how to do it.
Right.
They can throw a main break on while we're all sleeping, you know, which is, it's important to have in some kind of a scroll, you know, our news, breaking news, so. As far as the, the app button, I don't know who was set up to do, I don't know if we have to call them with changes or not. George was?
As far as I know, he was the lead on that. I was never involved in that app.
Okay.
Well, maybe you can look into that, so.
Well, I actually, I'm having, I have an insurance meeting tomorrow in Coal City. I might run into him and just ask him what, what the deal was because he would know more than anybody.
But I think we're going to have to set that up with them, that we're able to.
Yes, yeah.
Do the.
I just want to find out who.
Right.
So I can call them and say.
I've got, I've got that name.
Okay.
I've got that name in my email, so.
Okay, good.
I think I put that whole folder on your desk sometime back, you might still have that.
Yeah, I think I do.
That would help.
But I, I did a lot of emailing with her, you know, back and forth, trying to get, trying to pull all of that information together that was started and getting it pushed out.
And if you all downloaded it and were kind of playing with it and everything, and you're okay with it, I think we're ready to just push them for a launch.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I mean, the only thing I noticed, like, it doesn't link to my Facebook page. I don't know, it says there's an error or something, so I don't know.
Okay.
And there's some information we got to get updated on it, too, so.
We can get that to link.
Are we going to reach back out to the businesses to see?
Yes, definitely.
I think some of that information's old.
The majority of the businesses aren't on there.
Right.
And there was a couple of the community organizations I think we should add, mainly the Chamber and the Fire Department.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, on that, the business address thing and thing, I don't see any problem with that.
Who's the Facebook group, just that says Piattone?
That is a page that was started by a student several years ago. And I know who it is, but I don't want to throw his name out without his permission. But he's got a lot of, he's got a lot of followers, and he, he takes our stuff, you know, and pushes it, you know, also. I've had a, I've had a conversation with him, you know, so he's definitely dovetailing on to anything and everything that we do.
Okay.
Took a little while to find out who that was.
Other response on Facebook was good from the weekend.
Very good. Anything else on that? So we'll put that on the agenda for approval for the first November meeting?
Yep. I'll, I'll warn Webfoot that it's more than likely coming after approval and to get ready to rock and roll. They can, they can do a few backend things that don't cost any money, so.
Both of those items we have taken care of.
Yep.
Strategic plan?
Okay, so, we had a homework assignment on the strategic plan. And kind of like to start going through some of that. Did anybody take a swipe at the, at the?
The mission statement?
The mission statement.
Well, here's my question.
Okay.
Because I started trying to think about that a little bit.
Sure.
But then I started doing some research, you know, exactly what is a mission statement?
Right.
And to me, it's, it seems like we almost have to have a vision statement that kind of leads to the mission statement.
Okay.
Because if I understand correctly, the, the vision statement kind of says what we want or what we want it to be, and the mission statement says how we're going to do it.
Okay.
So there's kind of two different things.
Yeah.
Because when I originally thought of a mission statement, I'm thinking more of the, what do I want? You know, or what do we want to do as a community? But the more I looked at it, to me, that's more of a vision statement. And then the mission statement kind of gets more into, okay, how do we, you know, how do we implement that? And how do we get there?
Yeah, that's fine.
So I didn't go any further than that, I wanted to.
You didn't write it, though?
No, I did not write it.
Well, I kind of thought, I mean, don't we kind of have to do the SWOT analysis first?
You can come at the end, I just wonder if anybody.
And I think that would be easier, you know.
I just wanted to see if people had ideas of what they thought the vision would be, you know, because, you know, mine, mine very simply, I just threw it together, you know, strive to maintain a peaceful environment, the local businesses, to serve the needs of our citizens, and strong growth, and strong and sustainable growth for the coming years. I mean, you know, so, just real simple, I don't want to, I don't want to get bogged down in the minutia of a mission statement, you know, so.
And I think that's, in a nutshell, what we're trying to do, yes.
And that's what the mission statement really is, just kind of a nutshell of what we're trying to do. So, the SWOT analysis, everybody take a shot at that? Strengths? We've got. I got a couple others here, sorry, besides mine. Okay, major roads, strength, I-57, Route 50. I have that as well, anybody else have that?
Yep. And the traffic counts on those are, are really good.
And they are really good, yeah.
As far as the road.
I have that, I actually have that same thing as an opportunity, you know, to me.
And that could be repeated.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, it can be repeated. And I think part of.
Like, transportation in general, you know, we've got the railroad here, you know, that could, you know, industry could use, you know, railroad. You know, maybe down the road commuter rail. And, you know, we also have a little airport that, that corporate people could use, you know, to fly into. So, that's, I think that all falls under the transportation heading there.
Okay. Anybody have anything different?
First strengths?
Yep.
Along those major routes, we still have quite a few vacant, available lots.
Right, availability only, yeah.
I think one of our strengths is we do have room to expand with the sewer plant.
Okay.
And our capacity.
What is the capacity, where are we? Are we about sixty percent?
I don't even think we're that. I think it's less than fifty percent.
Okay, yeah.
For autonomous sites, Piattone, having three car dealers, I think is huge.
That is great economic space, yeah.
The biggest strengths for us is our residents. Our residents stick together. When somebody's in need, they, they do a really good job of supporting each other, so.
Well, and I just liked what I saw, what little I saw Saturday, but even after the rain and the mist and everything, there's still quite a few people, when I saw you, there was quite a few people out there still. And that's citizen involvement and positivity that came out on Facebook and things like that. So the people are, the people are involved, I have people involved, so.
And I have the same thing. I also have our current board, our current administration, our current staff, and all of our employees that we have now. I think that's definitely a strength. I think we're, you know, in a great position, you know, with everybody that we have here in place throughout the village to move forward, and everybody is willing, you know, to make changes and make improvements.
And I think we have the ability to make good decisions and make them quickly and not kick the can down the road, but to analyze it and move on things.
Right. I have desire of the elected officials to expand the residential and business realm, which is absolutely. I can't, I can't sell a thing if I don't have you guys behind me. I mean, it's just that simple, so, and I think, I feel strongly that I have that, you know, so.
I had the, it's like everybody else, the location, property availability, I mean, we're not landlocked. Right. Sense of community, attitude and pride.
Right.
The low crime rate, we're nearly invisible rate, strong religious community. And also, it's a clean, friendly, and safe place to live.
Okay. I had a fresh palate to work from, even in the downtown area.
I've got a fairly clean slate.
Yeah, fairly clean, it's the same thing, yeah, just a fresh palate.
Lots of room for improvement.
Lots of room for improvement, but that doesn't, you know, but we also have some areas that are vacant.
Right.
That we're going to improve on to. And we've had, already had some conversations, some of those landlocked, that are interested, working with us, so, which is good, so.
Do you have anything?
I had all those, and I thought, you know, Piattone has a strong history, like a deep, rich history on top of all those ones that have grown up.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's the attraction of families, you know, and that's, that's the bottom line. I, I also had on here that the businesses that are here seem fairly successful. Car dealers certainly do.
Well, one of mine is just taking it, is I think we've really got some sharp business people.
Yeah, that right, right.
But, you know, presented with opportunities can take advantage of that, so, I think that's a strength, so.
Just be careful what kind of idea you give them on a street corner because they're going to run with it and make money, and they'll leave you broke, so.
I've got, Don, we've got a strong school system, and my experience has been that any community that, the school system is vital to bring in the right people. And, and we're fortunate there. We've got a good infrastructure of established neighborhoods. We don't have any, what I would consider nasty areas. Certainly we can do some cleanup, but we don't have anything we've got to overcome. The rest of mine were pretty much duplications.
Yeah, and I, I've got, I think we have a strong housing stock. I mean, there's houses available, they're relatively inexpensive. We have a grocery store and a pharmacy, which, you know, is a big deal in small towns. You know, to attract residents, I mean, we're, you know, we're close enough to Chicago where it's an easy commute if you're, you know, you want to go up to a show or a sporting event. And then, you know, there may not be a lot of shopping in the town itself, but, you know, within twenty minutes, you can pretty much get every major brand in the, you know, in the world, so.
Anything else?
Anybody have anything else different? That's good, that's a good start. Lot of, lot of strengths. Weaknesses?
The perception other people have of our community, that we don't want growth residential or commercial. We've got to overcome that.
And that's, that's been a longstanding perception.
Yep.
By a lot of people.
Yeah, I hear that. We have no established incentive programs to draw development. We talk about it a lot, but we don't have anything really etched in stone, with the exception of the villages foregoing the development fees for the current time. But that's something we need to work on, because if somebody does go, what's your program?
Right.
We're not going to feel.
Can I ask why, or was there a reason you didn't go for the, my brain is one blank. Community development block grant, the enterprise zone? That got actually approved for everybody around you, I mean, basically?
I have no idea.
Okay.
One time I brought it to George about TIF district, and his response was, we don't qualify, we're not, not destitute enough, but we're not bad enough.
Oh.
That was his response.
I don't, I don't want to contradict anybody's thoughts, but I'm going to tell you right now, I get a TIF district done here in no time flat at the school that were working with me. We'll get it, we'd get it done immediately. That you have all the necessary things. Now, you don't want to run around saying blight, 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 but blight does not mean that you're, have, you're destitute. Blight means outdated planning, you have some old buildings that are vacant, you have, you know, the properties that aren't gaining any value anymore and things like that. It doesn't mean that you're, you've got tenements. It just means that you need to update. And that's the bottom line, is you need to update.
I don't think any of the boards were ever against any of that. Probably didn't know how to pursue it, and were never led to pursue it.
Yeah, well, we'll do a TIF 101. I did one for moments, and I've done them before, so we'll do a TIF 101, and we'll have conversations about that.
What's the difference between a TIF and an enterprise zone?
Well, enterprise zone gives you a few things that you can do immediately. It gives you, and only if the taxing districts participate in it. That's part of the problem with the enterprise zone. But let's say they all did, you get a property tax rebate, abatement essentially for the first five years on a, on a sliding scale. You get, they get, if they build a new building, they get sales tax abatement for any materials that they buy in state. Okay, so, if we had that hardware store, and they bought all their nuts and bolts, put their walls together, they wouldn't pay any sales tax on that, you know, or anything else they buy in state. And that could be significant when you're building a two-million-dollar building, that's a lot of material. And then there's just some other things that are, you know, kind of goes along with the rest of that as far as the, the big two things are the tax abatement and the sales tax. Now, the schools, the sales tax, you take all the hit on, and you take a hit on the property tax abatement, so. The schools take a hit on the tax abatement if they get in it, or the fire protection district, or whoever joins in the enterprise zone. Now, they just did these enterprise zones, so it'd be real difficult for you to get in one for quite a few years now. Another eight years, I do believe. But with TIF, the difference in a TIF is, is that we hire a professional financial advisor, and they go out, and they go to the county, and they work with them to get the E A V on, on all the properties in the TIF district. And that's, once that is established, then any growth we get from there, let's say they establish the one street at a million dollars E A V now, okay? And we do a bunch of work down there and get that now, in the coming years, as taxes go up on that street, you get the difference between what those taxes were on day one and what the taxes are ten years down the road, which can be significant if you've redone the buildings. Or if you came up from ground zero, if you came up from vacant land, obviously it had no E A V, you get all of it. Now, the schools normally freak out on these things because they think, oh, you know, you're taking away our, our future tax. Well, yes and no. First of all, the biggest thing in a TIF is a but for. And the but for is, you're not going to grow but for the TIF. not going to grow but for the Tiff. You, you've got to have some corporate money. You'll hear all the terms, corporate welfare and things like that. You've got to have some money to give back to these corporations to incent them to come in.
Okay, so the village puts out the money to improve this area to get it?
No, you can use your Tiff ones. You can, actually, you can let those grow for a few years, and then you, as you get a new, let's say we got, somebody wanted to buy the whole block where the bars are, and they wanted to redo the whole thing into a shopping area. That's going to raise EAV. What we would do at that point was, we'd get a Tiff bond, and then the proceeds from the Tiff would pay the bond back, so you wouldn't have to go to your taxpayers to pay the bond back. But that's all part of a redevelopment agreement. Everything that you do within the Tiff comes from a redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
So.
Grant Park has been using that. Grant Park's 1,200 people, and they've made some major improvements in their downtown and their buildings, and, I mean, it's looking good. But at the IMRL, we were discussing this, and if I'm correct, if you're on the village board, or maybe a village employee, you cannot participate in it.
Correct. Yeah, that's the one-state rule. Yep. So.
It makes sense.
Right. Well, they just don't want anybody just doing it to take advantage of it, because there is a big advantage to it.
Sure.
Once you start generating the taxes, so. So, Tiff is, and then there's the business district. And the business, business district overlay is an additional sales tax of one percent that you just put in that district. So if that district is two blocks square, and you lay that over the top of it, that two blocks square pays an additional one percent. Now, the good thing for the businesses is, in that district, is as that one percent comes in, that money is regenerated back into that district. So if you wanted to do, as, as the time goes on, you wanted to redo a streetscape, or you wanted to redo a facade programmer, and then you have that money available from sales tax. And that takes a little buy-in from the businesses, and that's why that's almost good to do on day one, because then they get the idea of the whole thing. And they're, they're not paying the one percent people that buy from them are, and most people, after the first few months of whining and crying and screaming, they, they just go along with it. And business districts have been very good in a lot of areas. So, so a couple of tools that we have to satisfy that, you know, we just have to, we just have to decide which ones we want to chase, and then go forward, so.
Another weakness I had was, I think we're retaining very few of the 21 to 35-year-old college graduates that come out of this town. They moved to Mantino, Lenox, Tinley, Frankfurt, Malkina. A very small percentage are relocating back. And I don't think that's by force or having to for jobs, I think that's a personal choice they're making.
That's something that we have to look at to try to market the village, make the village more appealing to retain them.
Right. Anybody have anything else?
One of my weaknesses that I had, Don, was definitely our population, that we need to attract businesses, because like I told you, they, they told us, you, you almost need a minimum of 10,000 to do anything. And on that note, kind of like Mike said, we really need to promote the waiving of the fees and everything for new houses. It's, it's pretty sad when towns around us are growing residentially, and I think we've had six houses in the last five years, so we need to work on that, that's, that's a big weakness.
You know, playing on that, and I don't know this for fact, we should check on it, but I think both Mantino and Manhattan eliminated all impact fees.
Mantino and the school districts impact, they did eliminate the school district impact fees for a period of time, they just went back.
Just the impact fee, just the school?
Yeah, and, and I'll be honest with you, Tim Nugent told me that they were probably going back to putting them in, because it really didn't work. That, you could talk to Tim, I mean, he would tell you better or Bernie, but, yeah, so. But of course, we've been in a difficult market, let's face it, we've been in a tough market, and, and now for guys to build spec homes, you know, they got to go get money at the banks, and the banks just aren't, still aren't lending a lot, so they got to be really financially solid to get money, so you got to find the right guys. And they're out there, just have to find the right ones. We don't want mega builders, we don't want them putting up, you know, two-by-four sticks and, and, and bad siding, and everything looks exactly the same from the highway, and yeah, you got a lot of houses, but you got a lot of poor housing, and, you know.
We should have a lot of things in place that eliminate.
Oh, we do have a lot.
We have some, yeah, I was reading through it, yeah, so.
Couple of.
I had, I had population numbers as well, just so you know.
Couple of mine were communication, which we're trying to, kind of, that was part of that conversation we had earlier with the website, we're trying to improve our communication, but I think we have to continue to be really cognizant of, of what we're doing and getting information out to the public and getting the residents to buy in to what we're doing, and to be active and, and participate in everything that we're doing forward, and the money, you know, my funding sources.
I have funding, yep.
To accomplish different infrastructure projects, as well as, you know, developing new business.
Add a marketing campaign and corporate identity. Corporate identity being, they know Mantino, they know Manhattan, they know Beecher, and I don't think Beecher has any more businesses than we do, oh, by the way, you know, but I mean, they know the names, and we got to get the name out there. It's been, it's been kind of sleepy hollow for a long time, and we have to get the name out there. It's just, when they think of south of Chicago, they'd go, "Oh, Piattone," you know, that's down there. So, we got to work on that, too. Got to get name recognition.
Kind of going along with that, I mean, I, I just think we have no identity, we have no, there's no curb appeal when you go through on Route 50 or, you know, 57, I mean, you're not going to see much, but I mean, you know, it's just, there's nothing that identifies us as someplace, "Well, gee, I would like to stop here," or, you know, "See what's involved." I mean, it's just a drive-by. So, you know, there's no signage saying, you know, "We've got a downtown area, there are those businesses in downtown," or anything like that. I'd love to see, you know, some type of, you know, flags or signs, you know, pointing us to downtown. And all the weaknesses I have, I think, we've got high taxes, I mean, I know we're not, that's everywhere in, you know, this area, but it's kind of negative. And going along with communication, you know, we do have a strong community, but I think sometimes it's hard for newcomers to break into that community, so, you know, anything we can do to, to help new residents or new businesses become comfortable, you know, I think is a big thing.
Very good. Any other?
Talked about that curb appeal coming into town. Mantino looks so much cleaner and sharper on Route 50 than we do, and they have curbs and it's more, is that a state program, or is that a village program? And how come we're not participating in that kind of?
Well, I, Mantino's been very aggressive at chasing the state for money, and then they got a grant for their downtown, and then they spend some of their own, especially on that curbing out, and then they work with the businesses as well to do some curbing and things like that, so.
Was that Tiff money?
Some of that was, but not so much on 50. Downtown definitely was Tiff money, and then the grant money, so, and sometimes you can't use them in conjunction, so, but, so they've, they've been kind of on a campaign the last 15 years, really, to get that done. It took a while, but you're right, they do look a lot cleaner, and, and they were working with the local businesses then, as, as you're coming in or you're opening a new business, "Hey, we want you to do curbs and everything, and we'll help you with, you know, this and so, if we have a Tiff in there," or whatever, so. So, and then out on Wellington-Piaton Road, obviously the curb cuts, sidewalks, you know, things like that are going to clean that up tremendously, and some new business. And then along 50, you can, we can brighten that up a little bit, we just have to decide what we want to do, and, and then have a program. And then kind of get the business group in, because you've got the three car dealers out there, you get the business group in and say, "What, what do you guys think?" Because they'll, they'll be your, they'll be your biggest buy-in.
Yeah.
And they already look pretty sharp, real sharp.
Oh, yeah, they do. They're not, yeah.
But as far as developing that corridor.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
But you got sharp, and then you get, and then you got sharp, and you got, and, you know, you got to get the S into the sharps, you know, so. And I know it's, it's hard for a small businessman to commit that kind of dollar. It's, it's very difficult in these days, but, you know, somewhere along the line, I think we could find a way to help them.
Anybody have anything else?
Weaknesses?
Uh, just, I think we could do better with being clean, you know, as far as trash and just making the town look nicer, you know, it's a whole, I don't know, with the principle of one broken window, you know, if you don't fix a broken window in a vacant building, then people just think it's okay to break the next window, and so if there's trash on the ground and nobody picks it up, it's just, you know, the next guy thinks it's okay to throw trash. So, I don't know how we're going to improve that, but, you know, we talked about, you know, having more garbage cans in the community, and.
Talked about in the spring, next spring, hoping to get some kind of a program put together, beautification program.
Yeah, stuff like that, so. Right now, I don't think we're doing all we can to make that happen.
Anything else?
Opportunities.
Opportunities.
Huge opportunities, I-57. We have three undeveloped corners of that intersection. We do have the ability to put water and sewer under it for cost, so.
Route 50 and Piattone Wilmington Road, we've got some opportunities there for sure.
And I put, you know, and what I was just talking about, I mean, we could do a, kind of a comprehensive cleanup campaign, you know, including, you know, getting serious about planting trees, doing all the sidewalks, you know, putting trash cans out, putting benches out, putting planters, you know, you know, not just trying to picket this one little thing at a time, but.
Develop, develop a plan.
Yeah.
And then figure out a way to pay for it.
Exactly. But instead of just doing it fits and starts, and if it doesn't fit the budget this year, we don't do it, and it gets forgotten, and, so.
And I think you can roll that whole idea of getting water under I-57, water and sewer under I-57, you know, into that.
I think as far as the cleanup goes, too, in the town, that almost becomes contagious, where when things get cleaned up and look better, and if people step back from their own properties, be it residential or commercial or multifamily, whatever it is, and say, "Oh, yeah, this should be spiffed up."
If we, if we have as much success on the Christmas deal as we had Saturday, I would say in the spring, maybe do a pickup Piattone Day, and have the citizens, we'd do a street party downtown.
We've had this conversation.
Have a street party downtown, and have everybody, we'll get them bags, we'll, I'll twist the skyline, I think, is there?
No, star eight.
Star, I'll twist their, I'll twist their arms a little bit to get some bags out of them or something, and, or one of the car dealers, even. And people can get a bag, and some, we'll have some rubber gloves for them, and they can pick up as they, because springtime is when we're going to have the majority of it anyway, once the snow clears off, and then we can have a little street party downtown for them, and, and spend a little money and get a lot out of it, and they seem to like that.
I think that's something we definitely need to write in ink and.
Yep.
Pick a date and plan that.
Yep, so, just, just a thought.
No, that's, that's, it's an excellent thought.
One of the things that came up at the IMRL, there was a group, and they, I thought they were exactly like the Buckstein Group, but they seemed a little more, not quite so polished, you know what I mean, like you could talk to them, but, and the fellow emphasized, he says, "The one thing that small communities can do is to clean themselves up, pull the weeds, clean up the buildings, the homes," emphasize all of that. He said, "Because location finders for businesses, they don't say, 'Oh, we're coming to your built, your town next Thursday, so spiff up.'"
They just come.
They come, and, and they make the notations, "Hey, it's a sharp community, it looks," you know, or they write it off. And, and, and they say it's a reflection, not only on the citizens of the community, but on the village board, and how they emphasize it and pursue this cleanup process. And they said, "That makes the biggest difference of anything in the world." And it doesn't cost much, it's mostly just get up and do it.
Exactly.
Well, again, I think, I think you've got some great volunteers, and I think you've got some great organizers, too, that get functions organized, and they get the word out to the people. I think the school districts are really behind you, they appear to be, anyway.
It's one of my.
As far as getting the word out.
One of my opportunities is intergovernmental cooperation, which I think is something that, you know, we have to continue to, to foster, but as I said before, the more we get everybody working together, that's a huge opportunity, you know, to move things forward.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, I mean, we've talked about one of our strengths is the car dealers, and, I mean, I think something we might want to pursue, or just keep it out there, that, you know, if we could get more car dealers, you know, more brands out here, I mean, they, they like to all be in one spot.
I just heard that from, I was talking to the guy at Pearl.
Yeah, they all like to be, you know, one right after the other, so, you know, if we can entice a Honda dealer, Toyota dealer, or somebody, you know, I think it would just be great. The other thing I talked, I think Piattone, I think we should have like a new car show, you know, they, they do their used car show at the fairgrounds, I think, you know, we should have a new car show, you know, if you don't want to go to Chicago to the new car show, you know, come to Piattone, and that, why don't, why don't those three dealers have a, a new car show that people can go to? So, I think just working, just in general, opportunity, working with those cars, I think, is, is a big opportunity. We want to keep them happy, and the happier they are, the, you know, more cars they're going to sell.
Absolutely. Okay. That's a good idea. Anything else?
Two minutes.
At the windmill, I mean, not that familiar, is, is it a historic landmark? I mean, can we leverage that?
And it's actually owned by the village.
And as long as I've lived here, 37 years, I've, I've never seen sales on it, I mean, I think, if you're going to sell this.
There, there were sales on it for about.
A week.
A week, yeah.
Okay.
And they came down.
I think it's something you can leverage, but it's hard to leverage if it's not.
Right. And that is, that, that is a huge monetary undertaking, yeah.
I always, funny, I almost put that as one of our weaknesses, really, just because, I mean, I was on, I was on the historic site for years, I was a big mill reporter, but man, I mean, that's just chewed up people and spit them out, and it's just so, it's just so much money gone into that thing, and we haven't, we definitely haven't got our money's worth out of it.
Is it on its original location?
Yes, yeah. I mean, it's a great monument, and I, I really like it, but it's just, God, it's just, there's so much money that's gone into that, and we just really haven't gotten our, our money's worth out of it.
There were split factions on what should be done with that, and that created a lot of the issues. Let's restore it, make it a working farm machinery, well, that's impossible, but they do it. Used to be a fellow lived here, Francis Reagan, and he had the best idea, I thought, was to, for lack of a better term, turn it into a lawn ornament. Don't make it a working farm machine, get up, blades made correctly, have it motorized, where if the wind's blowing 80 miles an hour or five miles an hour.
Gears down.
But it turns at about the same speed, it doesn't.
Right.
And, and you don't have it, so it's all going to rotate and do all of these mechanical things, but it looks like a functioning mill. Much less cost, and certainly 2% of the amount of maintenance the other would do, but, but it is unique to our.
It is unique, it is.
I mean, any small community, I've worked in Ags, so I'm familiar with a lot of small communities, and, and I can't name another one in the state that's got a.
Right.
A wooden, a windmill, a lot of wooden elevators, things like that, but nothing like, like that that I'm aware of.
Hey, you got to go to Michigan and see one. Any else? Last thing, threats.
Definitely are vagrants to the north themselves.
Yeah, that's what I got, too. Close towns that have worked harder than we have.
They've been trying to build the industry and business. I think one of our biggest senses, kind of like he said, one of our weaknesses is our, our image, you know, the past is haunting us, so.
I think one of our threats is the Piattone's name being attached to the airport for so many years.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, I think that's really damaged the growth and development of the community.
I've got here being overrun by the airport, something we can't control would be a threat. Another was having our boundary lines crossed and having other surrounding communities encroach in our space. We've got handshake agreements, but I don't think we've got anything legally etched in stone.
I believe there are, there are written boundaries.
South and east. The south and east.
Yeah, but are those really?
I don't know how binding they are.
That's what I mean.
Well, yeah.
But they are, they are written.
Right, right.
But how binding they are.
But if a property owner decides, oh, I want to go to Mantino, I don't think there's anything to do to stop them. You know, if they annex up to that point, I just say, like, we just have to be diligent.
Diligent.
Have our ears to grow.
Mantino's not going to bring sewer and water that far, so that's the good news.
Yeah, but I think in any of those, I mean, because even when we were talking with Paul Shore about the interchange that 6,000, I mean, Bourbon A kind of took that, most of that from Mantino, right? I mean, wasn't there?
There was a boundary, there was a boundary agreement, but there is also a tax sharing program on there as well on the one side of the interchange that's closer to Mantino.
Yeah.
So, so Mantino got all the, got the benefit of some taxes without the, without the hassle of maintenance.
Bourbon A got the lion's share.
They got, well, they got the three corners. So they got the, they did get the lion's share of it, but, you know. It remains to be seen what actually goes on there, so, you know. Did you see they were cutting a ribbon today or tomorrow? Tomorrow they're cutting a ribbon on U.P.'s. I said, oh.
Oh, no.
So, but, yeah, you got to have, I mean, historically, Mantino's been pretty good on boundary agreements. They follow them pretty close. I mean, if you want those, that's something we can certainly pursue. You've just got to decide how far out you want to go.
I just think all these handshake agreements.
We do have Beecher.
Beecher, Mantino.
I think that's it.
Anything else? Anything else?
I just have complacency, you know, just.
I've got apathy.
Apathy, yeah. There's nothing we can do.
Apathy and frustration.
Just go along and do nothing, so.
So, I mean, and I think, but as, as things start moving forward, you know, I hope that we can erase the majority of that and get people to engage. I've got big box, the big boxes. I mean, in a way that threatens business people in the community, we have to try to get people, residents, the local people to shop locally and, you know, use local services as opposed to automatically getting in their car and driving the 20 miles someplace else. Do you have anything, Robert?
No. That pretty much changes this, which is pretty much what we were talking about, you know, it's stability, the perception of Piattone, what people perceive this as. Where that, there's no change going on, there's nothing happening here and it's, you got to change all that too.
Kevin?
Well, I think we got a good start. I think we'll hold off on wish lists until we get some of these written down and I'll eliminate duplicates. You can turn those into me, I'll eliminate the duplicates.
I need more.
On the wishlist part, I get a comment.
I just started mine. So when do we want to, do we want to wait till the next committee of the whole?
I think we'll do that.
Okay.
That'll be shorter, yeah. And that gives me a chance to compile it all.
Okay. So what would be the next step?
Well, we'll do the wishlist and then from there, we're going to nail it down and start working on the mission statement. And we're going to start working on the, taking these and where do we want to go with them now, you know?
And then where do we?
Narrow it down.
When do we bring others in?
Right after the next one after that, yeah. And then I think it's important that we kind of repeat that performance with them.
Right.
And then have that meeting. Because the buy-in from them is just as important as your buy-in, you know? Obviously, you guys control the purse strings, but the enthusiasm and the, and the get-up and go comes from the community being out there telling people, hey, we're actually doing something, come to join us. You'll tell them that, but they're going to think you're campaigning. If their neighbor tells them that, then it's, you know, it carries more weight.
Anything else for the committee of the whole? If not, a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Motion, second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Hupkey.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.